With the District 203 candidates. For candidates of other districts, please see the other links that we have provided. Just some quick housekeeping rules. This is a forum and not a debate. Each candidate will be given two minutes to share their introduction. After the introductions, each candidate will be asked a total of five questions, one by one. Each candidate will be given one to two minutes to answer each question. The introduction and questions will be asked alphabetically based on last names in alternating order. We will close the forum with one minute given to each candidate for the closing statement. Candidates, please be sure to stick to the time limit. The questions are the following. First, how would you work on current school policies to ensure students from different race, ethnic, and religious background will feel safe, included, and celebrated as a student? Let's get this forum started with candidate Amato going first for this question.
Thank you. Are we going to do introductions or just jump, jump right in?
Sorry, yeah, so you can have one minute for the introduction and then we could jump in.
Okay, well, thank you, and thank you to the Islamic Center in Naperville for hosting this event tonight. My name's Ron Amato. I'm running for school board in District 203. I've lived in Naperville for about twenty-two years now with my wife and family. We have two students in the district. They're at, my son's at Naperville North and my daughter's at Washington Junior High. They've come up through the district, starting at Anne Reid Early Childhood Center. I've been involved in the community. I've served on, on the board of a couple of nonprofits in town, Kids Matter and the Exchange Club of Naperville. I also serve on a City of Naperville Boarder Commission. That's the firefighter pension fund board. And professionally, I'm an attorney, involved in financial services area mainly. And I'm running because I, you know, I believe in strong public schools and I want to give back and make sure that our excellent schools in District 203 stay on the right path. And I, you know, I want to continue to add value to the, to the board and give back to the community. And I'll jump into the, to the question. And it was a great question. You know, we have, I grew up in the area and we have, you know, a lot more students from different backgrounds than we used to, obviously, when I was a kid. I recently heard that the city in Naperville has about twenty-two percent Asian population. So, you know, we need to make sure that everybody feels welcome in, in school and feels included because students need to feel welcome and they need to feel comfortable in, in order to learn and in order to thrive. And I think the district, you know, is doing a fairly good job in that area. They, they've hired Dr. Leaks. They have a comprehensive equity plan. There's a diversity and inclusion committee. You know, the district, I think, at the, kind of the individual school level, does a lot to try to celebrate students of different cultures and kind of recognize that everybody's different and we need to kind of celebrate everyone's culture. But I, you know, I will say, just to touch on one, one aspect of the question, I feel it's extremely important that all students feel safe when they're at school. And, you know, the district has a policy against bullying. That's something that I take very seriously as a, as a parent and as a resident. And, you know, I think it's imperative that the district does everything it can to be proactive about trying to enforce that policy and make, make certain that all students feel comfortable and, and that there's no, you know, bullying or harassment or things of that nature going on. And, you know, a lot of that's handled at the school level by the, by the administrators. But to the extent that that would ever trickle up to the board level, if I were on the board, you know, I'd, bullying of people because of their ethnic background or that sort of thing is something that I would take, take a very dim view of. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Amato. Next, we'll have candidate Black.
Oh, okay. My name is Melissa Kelly Black. I've been a parent in Naperville 203 since 2005. I have two sons that have abilities that range from gifted to special needs. So I understand the stress and concerns that families feel when their children are struggling academically, socially, and emotionally. I am a former educator with a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in education with a minor in world religions. I've studied international business in Europe, political science in China, and marine biology in Belize. I've participated in educational research projects across the globe for organizations such as Cambridge University and the Jane Goodall Facility Institute. I have attended educational conferences at Harvard, MIT, and Stanford. I've worked with educational and medical professionals from Lowry's Children's Hospital, Rush Medical Center, and Northwestern University. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Black, and then you can jump right into the question.
Well, I'll go back to my intro. I said that my kids had diverse needs. So the, it's very important to me that our schools are accessible, equitable, and that we attend to the academic, social, and emotional needs of the kid, the children. And we do have the comprehensive equity plan in place. However, as an educator, I think that I always resort back to the thought that intentions are great, but we need to make sure it's how are these programs implemented? Are they effective and do we have the outcomes for all students? So we know that we do already have some achievement gaps. So we do have some areas we can get better at. I also know that we do have, with the equity plan, we do have a group that meets. I have some concerns about that the parents, there's one parent from each school. I would like to see more, I don't know how those parents are selected, but I think that we have a very diverse community. So I think we need more input from the families. I'm not comfortable necessarily with it being a closed meeting. I think that sends a message. I think if we want inclusion and equity and a feeling of respect and tolerance, we need to make sure that we're very welcoming to the families. And then I could just go on that it, you also have to make sure it's in the curriculum. Another thing that's very important is, you know, you don't want to just have special days and highlight, you know, a culture or a thought. This really needs the philosophy and the mentality needs to be embedded in the curriculum and instruction so that those, those feelings of celebrating diversity, inclusion, and respect for each other, even though we have different viewpoints or perspectives. Again, that has to be something that's not taught separately, but ingrained into the culture and the lessons.
Thank you, candidate Black. Next, we'll have candidate Jerick.
Hi, thanks for hosting us tonight. I'm Christine Gurkey, and I've lived in Naperville since nineteen ninety-eight. And prior to that, I was a student at North Central College. When I'm not working, I enjoy working in my yard, tending to my garden, watching a lot of baseball. I share my home with my son and daughter, who went through District 203 K through twelve. And they're now in college pursuing very different majors at very different sized universities. It's been my honor to serve on the District 203 School Board since 2017. The role combines my love of education and public service. I believe every child should be welcomed and appreciated as a unique individual. And I want to, I want to help foster them in finding their own passions, just the way I have mine. And I'm committed to maintaining the strength of our schools going forward. The question that you posed is, is a, it's a fantastic question. And I will say, our school district, we have many things in place to address that. So it's important for the board. We, we view that at the board level of embracing all of our students. We take that seriously. We have a comprehensive equity plan that is fairly new. And I want to make sure that that's implemented faithfully. And, you know, with it being so new, we need to put it into place and, you know, watch how, how it affects our students, you know, how it evolves and constantly monitor that it's working towards the goals that we have of embracing all of our students. We have a very robust diversity, equity, and inclusion committee. That committee comprises, it's comprised of administrators, building level staff, community members, board members, our liaisons. We rotate each year. We have different committees. But each year, two members of the board sit on that committee. So that's a very robust, led by Dr. Leaks. Lots of input, different exercises. We're also very, working very hard to recruit teachers and other staff members that look like our student population, so our kids can see themselves in the adults that they interact with all day long. So working on diversity, it's, as, as an individual, it's very important to me that every student walk into our building feeling safe, not just physically, but being, feeling safe emotionally and socially, that who they are is accepted. And so from a board level, it is a priority for me to keep those things in place, keep improving upon them, and, you know, letting them evolve, you know, not being rigid, but listening to what our families and students are asking of us.
Thank you, candidate Jerick. Next, we'll have candidate Kosminski.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to thank ICN for hosting this forum tonight. I'm Joe Kosminski, and I'm running for reelection to District 203's school board. I have three kids in the district, two at Naperville North, one at Washington. And we've lived here for eight and a half years, moving to the district just before my twins started first grade, five days before, in fact. And, you know, the, the district is a big part of why we chose to move to Naperville. I'm, I'm passionate about education. That, that's why I'm running. I'm a scientist and educator. I've been teaching physics in higher ed for eighteen years. And I've been doing K-12 STEM outreach for even longer as a scientist. And I, in research, I've also worked on international high-energy physics collaborations through Fermilab. And now I'm doing research in climate vulnerability inputs, like air quality and urban heat islands. So, you know, I'm qualified because, through my professional skills, as a way to give back to the professional, or the community. In terms of the second question, you know, I, I think the, the equity plan is something that I'm very proud of. I, I was on the diversity committee at the time. Dr. Leaks put that, yeah, presented that, and we got to reveal it. And I think there are a lot of very strong pillars in that equity plan. The, one of the things that we're currently doing in terms of measurement in the equity plan is administering the Panorama Survey, which looks at things like student belonging in the district. And even though we've only had one set of data, really, we've already started to tweak some things a bit and added a couple of positions at the high schools to ensure that students do feel that, that sense of belonging and part of the community. And even reaching back into the middle schools, those positions reach back into the middle schools and make sure that the transition to high school is smooth going forward. We have a naturally recognized social-emotional learning or SEL program as well. And that's really important because the social-emotional learning has positive impacts on academic performance and mental health, but also social skills. It helps students break down barriers, resolve conflicts, develop character and empathy, build community, and collaborate effectively. Really, it helps them work together in teams. For this to be effective, teachers have to keep going, undergoing trainings on things like unconscious bias and cultural awareness and respond to bullying and discriminatory comments effectively. So we just need to build that culture of inclusion and support within schools.
Thank you, candidate Kosminski. And then the final candidate for this question, we'll have candidate Wagner.
Yeah, my, excuse me. My name is Gilbert Wagner. I'm running for District 203 School Board. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm running because I, I value a great public education. I served on the West Chicago School Board, District 33, for eight years. So I have eight years of school board experience. Six of those years, I served on the SASTA Board of Control. So West Chicago, District 33, is a vastly different district than here. Lots of different ethnic backgrounds, so I do have some experience with that. My wife and I, my wife has lived in Naperville almost her whole life. I've, I moved to the district three years ago. We have one son, who is graduating, senior in college, graduating from Western Illinois this year. And I have a kindergartner at Kingsley, so we're doing this again. And I want to be on a school board. I bring a, a blue collar background. Just a little different background than, than some of the other members on the board. As far as your question, I think a lot has already been said. And all the, the positive the district are doing with the, all the different plans. I believe we got to have student surveys to see how the kids feel. I believe that we are not, we got to make sure all students feel welcome. That's the most important part, is to make sure all students feel welcome. And we have to have a, a strong anti-bully policy and a zero-tolerance policy when it comes to that. We need to, cyberbullying is a big issue. And you, you know, these kids, when they leave at three o'clock now, it doesn't stop. It's on their phones, it's on social media, it's on Twitter, it's on everything. And I think the school district has a policy that reflects that and makes sure the anti-bullying is important because that's, and that's where a, a big problem is. People don't feel welcome if they're being picked on all the time. A strong SEL program, which the district does have already, make sure that's strong and includes everybody, very inclusive. Like I said, a lot of it's already been said. It's, it's a great district. But a, a goal in, in part of the curriculum is, is teaching, teaching students how to work with others. And if you teach them how to be good stewards of the community, teach them how to work with others of different backgrounds, it'll just make them a better person in the, in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Wagner. That concludes our first question. Our next question will be, what measures would you take to ensure the curriculum that is selected does not feed into implicit bias against any marginalized group? And for this one, we'll be going in reverse alphabetical order, so we'll have candidate Wagner.
Sorry, not used to going first with Wagner's last name. I do believe policy, curriculum needs to be set to strategic goals of the district and all the strategic goals of the, of the district and the community to include everybody and equal, equal opportunity education for all. And should not, curriculum should never exclude any certain ethnic background or race or any, any minority of any kind of student. Curriculum should be designed for every student to have the best education possible that fits the core curriculum standards of the state. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, candidate Wagner. Next, we'll have candidate Kosminski.
Thank you. Yeah, having, you know, diverse cultures represented within the curriculum is very important. And, you know, we, we are in compliance with the, the state laws for sure, but we, you know, go beyond that, right? There, there are state laws for Asian-American history and LGBTQ plus and, and, you know, black African-American history. So we're, we're in compliance with those. But, you know, the, the district does do a very good job of providing a diverse list of, you know, books and, and things in the, yeah, throughout the curriculum. Not just in history, but in, you know, the, the English language classes. You know, we, we need to, the, the SEL program also helps, you know, build that, it helps with that curriculum. It helps students from different backgrounds understand each other, learn about each other's cultures, and, you know, kind of understand different points of view. So I, I think that this can be integrated widely into the curriculum, not, not just in the core academic areas, but also in things like, you know, SEL and in music and, you know, things like that, bringing in, you know, works from other cultures. Thank you.
Mr. Ameri, you muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you, candidate Kosminski. Next, we'll have candidate Jerick.
So outside of, well, I mean, the core curriculum in, it needs to be a foundation for all students. But in order, it's important, I believe, to have all, just a wide range of offerings of classes, especially if we're talking like at the high school level, so that kids can, you know, learn about other cultures, for example, or, you know, learn different parts of history, not just Western Civ or American history, for example. You know, to have a wide range of offerings. I, Joe touched on the music piece, which I think is important too because that's a great way to incorporate all sorts of things from around the world. You know, you can find different composers, you know, different styles of music. But my point is mostly that I want the kids to have a well-rounded education. And whatever that looks like at each age level, we can make that age appropriate. But it's important that they, they have knowledge of other cultures and other, it's just important to have that knowledge that their perspective and experience isn't the only one. And the SEL piece, I think, does a very good job of that because it teaches, it teaches what it means to be, to have healthy relationships, to have empathy and compassion for others, how to engage with others. And so when you, when you take in the academics and well-rounded resources and very robust resources, and you, you bring the SEL component into it, as they weave together, the kids will have better abilities to go out into their world and know how to engage with people at very different levels at any time.
Thank you, candidate Jerick. Next, we'll have candidate Black.
Hi. I listened to a lot of what was said. I think that we used to, when I taught, one of the things we wanted to avoid was the piñata effect, where you just separately take out, and we celebrate today, we're going to celebrate and do this lesson. Because those lessons, it almost separates the concept for the kids. Like this is a whole, I think that when we talk about, you know, diversity, we, we want to celebrate, yes, there are differences, but you also want to talk about the similarities between groups that bring us together. So we don't want to just, you know, have a special month, we do it, and then we don't embed it in the curriculum and the materials and the instruction the rest of the year. So again, we celebrate the, the differences. We have to have that mindset in our classrooms. And then we also need to embed it naturally into the curriculum. So, you know, for example, like when you're teaching literature, how many of our children, how many people can list three books by a Muslim author? You know, or like Rumi, like poetry. So there's a lot of, you could talk about the calendar, the Islamic contributions to math. And it's not just Islamic. That's another issue we have, is we tend to dominate. Like we have the success program, and it's focused at African-American. We need to make sure that we're not, that we're diverse in all cultures, ethnic groups, and religions so that this tolerance is spread to all groups that are in our schools. And we don't just, like, celebrate these months with certain groups. Not every kid fits into every month, so it's important that they see themselves throughout the school year.
Thank you, candidate Black. And finally, for this question, we'll have candidate Amato.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I, I think I agree with a lot of what's been said. You know, inclusion means you're, you're including everybody, right? So, you know, not just one, one particular ethnic or racial group, but, you know, we've, we've got to be mindful that there are a bunch of different cultures that kind of make up, make up the student body. And, you know, as far as the curriculum, you know, the, the board itself doesn't develop the, the curriculum. That's done by the administration, and they develop a curriculum that's aligned with state standards, and then that gets presented to the board. And I think as far as the core, kind of the core academic curriculum, you know, math, science, reading, or English Language Arts, those, those, those subjects, you know, those are, those are kind of the building blocks. But then you have everything else, which is where the, the SEL comes in. And, you know, that's an opportunity for students to become kind of more mindful of the fact that, you know, that there are a lot of other cultures out there in the world than just, you know, maybe than just their family. And, you know, they, they have to, I guess, gain some self-awareness through, you know, having that type of curriculum embedded in the schools where they're, you know, they're learning about other cultures and, and, you know, realizing that there's a, a lot more out there in the world than just possibly what they've been exposed to. And, you know, in that regard, I really, I agree with a lot of what candidate Gurkey said, where, you know, I think it's important for students to get a well-rounded kind of an education where, you know, once they're, once we're teaching the kind of the building blocks, the core curriculum, if you were, you know, if you will, then there's, then there's the other, you know, the other areas where students really can, can learn about their, their role in society and other cultures. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Amato. That concludes our second question. Our next question is that students from different cultural and religious backgrounds have reported that there is a lack of diversity of teachers. Do you feel that hiring diverse staff is important? And if so, how would you work to ensure that teachers from diverse backgrounds are hired? And for this question, we'll go back to alphabetical order, so we have candidate Amato up first.
Okay, well, thank you for the, the question. You know, look, I think it's, it's important for the district to hire, you know, teachers who reflect the, the student population, you know, as has been said. And I think that's part of the comprehensive equity plan to, to focus on doing that. So I think, you know, the, the will is there. You know, the question is, you know, how do you go about doing that? And right now, you know, and this was talked about a little bit last night in the forum that we did, there, there's a, there's, you know, not necessarily a shortage of certified teachers at this point, but, you know, the district is having a difficult time. You know, and schools in general are having a different time attracting people in, in general. So I think, you know, that makes it even more difficult to, you know, try to, try to attract and recruit candidates of a, you know, of a particular ethnicity or that sort of thing. You know, but, but we have to try, and, and, you know, the district, the HR person, you know, people that work in the administration in that area have to look for creative solutions. You know, there are job fairs, there are things like that where, you know, there can be community outreach to try to attract those, those types of candidates. And, you know, I personally think District 203 is a, you know, a great district. And, you know, hopefully, there are people out there that, that feel that way and think it, think it would be an attractive place to work. And I think the challenge is just, you know, to get, get in front of those people and connect with them, you know, from a, from kind of an HR recruiting standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Amato. Next, we'll have candidate Black.
Okay, so, first of all, I've heard the comment, and I'm going to be honest with the administration saying, you know, we just don't, we don't control our applicants, which is fair enough. And we do have the shortage. I think the issue goes back to, we know statistics research shows that the quality of the instruction has the biggest bang for buck on the quality of education and the ability of the educational system to meet the needs of the students. So if we pride ourselves, and a lot of us sacrifice, we paid more for our homes, we pay more in taxes, we did this because we want those educational opportunities. We want the community that's appealing and desirable. And if our district, not only if we don't fulfill desirable. And if our district, not only if we don't fulfill and provide that high-quality education, not only do our students lose out and our children lose out, that our home values go down. So it seems a little penny wise, a pound foolish to just average, to offer average pay. Now, some people will say stuff like, oh, we're throwing money at the problem. That shows a total lack of understanding of what the issue really is. Because we have teachers that are paid well that are still leaving. So anyone that has managed to run, run a company understands that these issues are very complex. So yes, one of the easiest upfront things to do is if we want over average, if we're offering average, we're not getting teachers, we need to offer over that. There's other things we can do that benefit us. For example, we should pay for professional development. We can do it in diversity. If we can't hire the people, we can at least train the people that we have to be better at it. Another thing is, we're in an age of intolerance. That's a huge issue with diversities and teachers and the staff. It's hard on them. So we have to start offering some mental health services, even offer them, when we go back to professional development, they have to request days off. Why not have it mandatory? Give them a break from the classroom and learn something new.
Thank you, candidate Black. Next, we'll have candidate Gerke.
So one of the things that is very top of mind for us is recruiting a diverse workforce. We are, you know, we, there's the traditional routes as far as going to job fairs, you know, going out to different universities. One of the things that, you know, it's, it's, we, we want a diverse workforce, like I had said earlier, so that our students can see themselves in the educators and staff members that they interact with each day. But the other thing too, is that when we're out recruiting for teachers, the strength of our schools as they, they are now is also a big draw. And so it, it becomes, we want to continue to be the strong school district so that people want to come work for us. And at the same time, we're saying, we want you to come here, we want them to come here, to want to come here too. And so that's where that piece of promoting who we are as a school district and as a community, to say, hey, we are a welcoming school district. We do value all sorts of cultures and perspectives. There's, there's no limit on who we want to be here. So we're, we have to advocate for ourselves in this situation outside of just our community and say, here's who we are, this is our story, this is why we want you here. And in turn, we want them to look at us and say, there is some really amazing work going on in that school district. And we can show that through many of the things that we've already talked about, our equity plans, our diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives, the way we support our staff, what we offer them through professional learning and development, so that they ultimately say, yes, that's where we want to be. And it becomes a mutually beneficial relationship at that point.
Thank you, candidate Gerke. Next, we'll have candidate Kozminski.
Thank you. Yes. Recruiting a diverse workforce is a priority of the district. It's, in fact, discussed in, in the comprehensive equity plan. And the other candidates have, you know, talked about a number of ways that, that this can be done with recruitment fairs, for example. And the district has expanded its reach, going, you know, outside of the area, going to other parts of the country, going to HBCUs, going, you know, trying to, you know, find new avenues for recruiting a diverse workforce. And then retaining that, that workforce is also really important. And there, there's been work to put together affinity groups for, you know, for teachers and staff within the district as well, you know, to, to provide support, you know, once, once they're here. I think Christine's right. We have a lot to offer. We have an increasingly diverse school district. We have a, a top SEL program in the country. We, we've been recognized for our equity work. I, I think, you know, this is a place that we can market and sell to potential candidates. I, I think another thing that's a little bit different, and not an immediate fix, but, you know, we have Grow Your Own programs. So these are somewhat new, trying to bring students who are in high school into education through some education courses in high school, even a career pathway in education as an endorsement on the diploma, and then going to college and hopefully bringing them back into the district. So this could also be a way to recruit a more diverse teacher pool by starting at the high school level.
Thank you, candidate Kozminski. And now we'll have candidate Wagner.
Yeah, I think this is a great question. I think diversity, we need, is, is very important in candidates. Everybody's, everybody covered everything, possibilities. But if we have teachers leaving our district and we still, we, 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 everybody thought about how great our district is and our great district is, this is great, great, great. But there's a reason why teachers are leaving, are not coming. So what's that reason? Why are we seventy, almost ninety staff members short in our district right now? I know it's, 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 it's countrywide, it's statewide, it's, it's bad, right? But why are we? So let's, let's not worry. It's easy to say, oh, everybody else is having the same problem, but let's figure out why we're having our problem and fix our problems and not worry about everybody else. Is it, do we need to offer a little bit more money? People don't leave careers and jobs because of money necessarily. People leave because of leadership. They leave because of other reasons. They don't feel appreciated. They don't feel welcome. So we need to make sure our teachers are feel welcome in every background. And it would be interesting to see, like, what's the availability of candidates of different backgrounds? I mean, we, there might not be that many. What do we got to do? What is important to that group of teachers that is more important than making, you know, a certain dollar amount? Maybe they want something else that's more important to them that, that we have to, to think outside the box. Through work, we went to a, a how to hire a millennial thing, and it's similar to where people have different needs and wants. Some, what's important to one, one person is not important to somebody else. Everybody has different stuff that motivates them to do their job and to be a great professional. So we have to figure out what that is and, and figure out different ways to incentivize people to come to Naperville, not just because we could just say our district's great, our district's great, because we already know that, teachers know that, everybody knows that. So why aren't they coming here? Was the question.
Thank you, candidate Wagner. Our fourth question is, how will you work towards progress and healing post-pandemic? And for this, we'll have candidate Wagner up first.
Oh, I think this is another great question. I think that the SEL program is the most, is one of the biggest, is one of the biggest steps to healing after the pandemic. Socially, I know my son fell behind. And I know I talked to a couple, I've talked to some students at different candidate forums and said that it was rough for them to be gone for two years. They, the first two years of high, of high school, they weren't even, they didn't even get to see the inside of their school. So we have to have a strong SEL program to welcome them back and, and basically teach kids how to be social again. And then academically, I know the district's done a lot to keep, to catch up from what we lost, and that's great, but the work's never done. We have to keep assessments going, interventions going. The MTSS program is great for that same thing, is to help bridge the gap on students that fell behind. Every student's different. Some people, some students did, you know, flourished with online learning and some crashed and burned. And my son was one of those that crashed and burned. So, but, you know, it was, you have to be able to recognize that in each student, and we have to be able to have the resources for them to be successful and whatever they need to help them get back to where they, we're back to standards, back, back up and catch up from the two years we lost. It's going to be rough. It's a lot of work, and it's, the district's been doing a great job already with that. It's just continued effort to, to make sure every student gets a, the equal opportunity they deserve to have a great, a great public education. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Wagner. Next, we'll have candidate Kozminski.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a, a really good question. And it is important, and it's affected different grade levels differently. And I, I think the SEL program, which, you know, I, all of us have talked about quite a bit, is a really important component of this. But I want to focus a little bit more on the multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS, and what that can do to help. So these, this multi-tiered system of support is able to look at each student individually. And, you know, teachers, social workers, school psychologists, counselors, everybody, you know, kind of has access and that record for, for each student and can help identify the needs of each student, whether they be academic needs or, or mental health needs or social emotional needs or, you know, special education needs, you know, whatever the, the case may be. And kind of set a, a course for them, right? Set a plan for each student. And I think that can really help the district identify where resources are needed and what kinds of resources are needed, so that we can more effectively allocate those resources specifically to the, the buildings in a very equitable way, where we can meet the needs of the populations in those buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Kozminski. Next, we'll have candidate Gerke.
So I'm going to focus again on the SEL piece. I, I would say, the first thing I think that's important as, you know, you know, this post-COVID piece is just acknowledging that we had a shared experience, you know, and it doesn't matter what age we are. It was difficult for everybody. And then when you take that to the level of our students, I think that having had the SEL in place before this was, before the pandemic, was an amazing benefit that we had, because we already had it in place. The kids were, the kids, the educators, everybody was familiar with what we were doing. And then the pandemic hit, and that helped sustain us through that time period. And now, as we've come out of it, the SEL piece is still there and it's helping us recover. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of work that has to be done as far as getting kids, having them in the buildings, you know, behavior expectations, building again those healthy relationships, knowing how to socialize with one another. But we're not starting from scratch, because we've already had that in place for our kids. And it's become even more important. So now we're able to take something and just keep building and, and recovering with it. One of the other things, when we look at the SEL piece, and as Joe mentioned, the MTSS, we're able to now identify what buildings, what kids need, what resources, and we can allocate them appropriately. If this building needs an extra social worker, then that's what they're going to get. If this building needs extra staff, then that's what we're trying to provide. And then lastly, we've really been looking very hard at student voice. We want to hear what our students have to say. We have an advisory committee of kids, middle school and high school, to help us understand what they need.
Thank you, candidate Gerke. Next, we'll have candidate Black.
All right. I am going to, I have to explain. I have a growth mindset. I think there are a lot of wonderful things the district does that we can celebrate. But I see weaknesses within the SEL program and the MTSS. And I say that as a parent who has gone through this as a process with the district with my children, my youngest son has had SEL IEP goals since 2010. Not one year did he reach his goals. That's a problem. That also tells us, as I go back to, as an educator, as a scientist, you have to measure outcomes, our intentions, and to really know what the programs are doing, not just what we designed them for, but are we catching all these students? And I, I don't think we are. I think we're catching some. I think we do really well with some students. But I know that they're not collecting data. I, as a parent, for the MTSS, they're supposed to collect data that's supposed to be shared with the parent. It's supposed to be a data-driven process based on, you know, research-based approaches. It's simply not happening. So I have concerns with that. And I think that my experience is reflected when we look at those achievement gaps. So whether my experience is an anomaly, we need to go back and look at it. We need to go back and look at the numbers and make sure the outcomes are actually there. And it's for all students. Because in my experience, it's, it's not as effective as maybe we think it is. And there are issues like shortage of staff. I'm not saying that the implementation, I think, we need to look at, where are the shortcomings? It doesn't mean our, our teachers aren't trying, our administration isn't trying, or that our board isn't trying. But again, we have to go back and look at the data and facts and see what's really going on.
Thank you, candidate Black. And finally, for this question, we'll have candidate Amato.
Yes, thank you for the question. I, I think, you know, everybody, everybody on this panel, you know, every parent that I know in the community, you know, had a tough time during COVID. It was a, like, like candidate Gerke said, it was a shared experience that we all went through, you know, and it hurt certain kids worse than, than others. And, you know, as, as, as candidate Kozminski said, it hurt, it affected certain grade levels more so than others. You know, think for a minute, if you had a, someone who was entering kindergarten, you know, in 2020, or entering high school for their first year of high school. And it also affected different, different students, you know, differently. There, there are students with special needs and, and things of that nature that were, you know, much, you know, much more severely impacted by being, you know, shifted to remote learning. But, you know, the, the good news, I think, is academically, you know, the district is, is rebounding. You know, obviously, there's more work to be done there, but the, you know, it's measured by some of the readiness standards and that. I mean, we are kind of rebounding to pre-COVID levels. But the, you know, the second piece of it really is that mental health piece. And that's where, you know, I think students still struggle and, and, you know, there's, there's kind of long-term implications from what a lot of these students went through. So, you know, we, we've talked about SEO, we've talked about MTSS, you know, but we need to make sure we have the supports in, in place that, you know, we're reaching those students who have mental health issues. And, you know, if, if their issues are serious, we need to make, make sure we're connecting their families with resources outside of the school that can provide them with, with mental health services. And there are a lot of great, you know, organizations in our community that can, that can do that. So I'm, I'm almost out of time. So I'll wrap it up. Thanks.
Thank you, candidate Amato. We will now move on to our final question, which is, what are some of the measures that you will take to advance equity among the special needs population, both academically and socially? And for this question, we'll start again with candidate Amato.
Um, you know, this is, this is a great question. And, you know, obviously, the, the special needs students in our district are, are students who need attention and they need support. And I think, you know, you can see that from the data about the achievement gap. You know, they're, they're the group that, you know, I, I hate to say it, but I mean, in, in certain respects, they're kind of being left behind, or it would at least appear that way from, from the data. I mean, and I don't think that the district obviously is intent, intending to leave people behind. But, you know, I think that the data would, would kind of support the conclusion that we need to be doing a lot more to provide support for those students. So, you know, I'm, I'm not an educator, I'm, you know, I'm not running for, for school board, because I want to kind of micromanage what's being done in the, in the classrooms. But, you know, we, we have a system in place with learning behavior specialists, with, you know, support staff and, and school psychologists, social workers, people like that, you know, that, that engage with these students. And we just need to make sure that we're deploying our resources wisely and, and making sure that these students who need the extra support are getting the help that they need. And, you know, I'm, I'm all in favor of that. are getting the help that they need. And, you know, I'm, I'm all in favor of that. If I'm elected to the board, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm willing to listen to any kind of initiatives that are brought before the board or any kind of, you know, improvements in this, in this area. Because, you know, it is important. And, you know, there are students with IEPs and I, I don't really want to get into that or get into my personal experiences. But, you know, we need to make sure that those students are, you know, are getting the help they need. And, and as candidate Black suggested, you know, that we're tracking their progress and, and making sure that they're meeting their goals. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Amato. Next, we'll have candidate Black.
Okay. So again, I do not want to say that our district does a lot of wonderful things. I'm just of the mindset of like the growth, like, like when you run a company, you know all the good things you do, that's great. But you're always trying to look for, how can I get better? How do I strive to be better at this? And this is an area we can do better in. I think that we come down to many of those vacancies that Gilbert talked about before are with people that provide support, their support staff for students with, students with IEPs. So obviously, if we don't have the teachers there, we can have great practices and policies, but we simply can't do the job if we don't have enough people there. Another issue is if our staff is spread too thin, you have to have planning time. And I know that in theory, we're supposed to be able to do all this. But again, if staff is low, we can't. The hugest part of all of this comes down to the data collection. It comes down to, is it happening? And, and actually implementing, fully implementing across all our schools, across all the students, the MTSS program, as the Illinois State Board of Education has said it should be, that we should be graphing after each intervention, did it work? Did it not work? And we shouldn't just wait for yearly IEP meetings to be told, hey, you didn't make the IEP goal. We should never, and other districts I worked in, we never, not reaching an IEP goal was not an option. So we've got to make sure that we have continuous conversation and sharing of data so that we can see what's working, what's not, and make timely adjustments. The problem is, when we don't provide the services or we don't provide, you know, timely adjustments, and we know we're not doing it, if kids are not reaching their IEP goals or if there's achievement gaps, that means that we need to go back in and adjust the system.
Thank you, candidate Black. Next, we'll have candidate Gurkey.
So one of the, one of the roles of the Board of Education is to monitor progress. And that means to monitor progress towards the goals for all students. And that, that includes students with special needs. We, when we're looking at what resources are needed in the building, in, in, in any building, we're looking at what we can do for all students. And that, again, I'm going to repeat, includes special needs. We're interested, as a board member, I can say this, you know, and as a board as a whole, we're interested in, in the growth and progress that every student is making. And so we're going to, you know, do our very best to ensure that the resources are allocated equitably, that when we're looking at data, we're looking at data for all groups of students, you know, whether we're looking at it as a student body as a whole or how we break out the data. We, there is, we, we do not leave any students behind. We want to see growth for everybody. We, we listen to our administration when they come to us and say, these are the things we need. And we try to provide what they're telling us. They're the experts. They're the ones that know. They live in the education world as their profession. And so when they come to us as a board, it's our job to figure out how to support all of our students. And that doesn't mean we leave one group behind to advance another. It's, it's all about equity and it's making sure that every, again, every student has what they need in order to be successful.
Thank you, candidate Gurkey. Next, we'll have candidate Kuzminsky.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree with what Christine has just presented in terms of we, we really try to support the needs of every student, you know, on the school board. And, you know, the, the district does come to us with recommendations for materials, for curricula that, and staffing that we look at and, you know, approve. The, the goal is really for every student to grow and succeed. And, you know, it, it's challenging coming out of the pandemic. The MTSS implementation was delayed by about a year and a half because of the pandemic. And, you know, we're, we're, we've launched it and we do need to measure it. We need to, you know, make sure that it's as effective as possible and we need to tweak it in places where it's not. We, I, I think one of the other big challenges, you know, staffing has come up a couple of times tonight. One of the biggest areas of turnover, if you look at the employment sheets, every board meeting, is special education assistants and other paraprofessionals. And, you know, the, the, having that turnover decreases stability, it decreases, you know, kind of that ability for a, a student to be tracked effectively by, you know, one person or, you know, a stable team. So I think there could be additional support and professional development provided for these special education assistants and paraprofessionals that, that might help retain them.
Thank you, candidate Kuzminsky. Next, we'll have candidate Wagner.
I'm going to build on a little bit what Jill just said there. I believe that the biggest piece we're missing is support staff in our district. We need to figure out a way to make support staff either paid better, probably paid better because traditionally support staff is paid, is underpaid. So that we need to build a better support system for our teachers. And we need to have accountability. I think no one's talked about that yet, is we have to have accountability for why our students are not performing. So if, are they not performing because they're not being taught well or they don't have the support they need? What's, what, what's the reason? So that's where the MTSS comes in. And we have to make sure we're assessing and we're reviewing and the interventions we're doing are actually working. And I agree with what, what this Black said is that you have to, you can't just have one, two-year meeting with a parent. It has to be a multi, it has to be a continually cohesive group with the parents, the teachers, the administration, the staff. Everybody has to work together. We are one team. And we have to be able to look outside our district too, and, and maybe they need support outside of school. So especially, you know, they need, they might need some support outside of school. What, what partners can we work with to, to provide family support outside of the school day, the six or seven hours they're in the building that will help them be successful in life? What other, what programs can we do? Could we expand those? How do we retain staff? Is the, is that we have to have a stable, stable environment for them to be in, for them to be successful? And that's for all students. But special needs, because it's a little bit more stable environment and with more consistency to be successful. And I think that as a school board, it's our job to provide that for our students. We can't go in there and tell the teachers how to teach, but we can provide the resources they need to do it.
Thank you, candidate Wagner. And that concludes the questions that we have today. Thank you so much to all the candidates that took out time to inform our community about issues that were important to us. And we are going to share this recording with our community and hopefully they'll have a more informed decision when they're on the ballot. Thank you so much and have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Night.